Bye Commission, a meeting called to order, April 5th. Which one's it in?
February.
Thank you.
Nineteenth and two thousand twenty-three. Well, that's many a subject. Okay, call to order. You want to use my phone, please?
All right. I have all right. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the citizens, my people. As well with their history and justice.
No comment.
Present.
Uh, Biden, Biden Chair Fernandez.
Present.
Alton, Commissioner, background.
Present.
Chair Gonzalez.
Present.
Present.
Like. Commissioner, or these just.
Okay, approval of the agenda. At this time, the commission may announce any item being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date or request the moving of an item on the agenda. Motion is approved.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second up.
The second is by.
Tramitos. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner, previous. Yes.
Yes.
By Chair Fernandez.
Yes.
Alton, Commissioner, from Teca.
Yes.
Commissioner, RB School of Pasadena, Commissioner, Moyo.
Yes.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yes. Okay, approval of the minutes. Item one, approval of the minutes, Planning Commission meeting. Minutes for April fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
I move to approve the minutes.
I second that.
Commissioner, Fernandez.
Yes.
By Chair Fernandez.
Yes.
Alton, Commissioner, from Teca.
Yes.
Commissioner, RB School of Pasadena. Uh, Commissioner, Moyo.
Yes.
And Chair Gonzalez.
Yes. Moving on to written communications.
Written communication, that's happened.
Okay. Public comment, non-agenda items, the public may address the commission on any item of interest to the public that is on the, that is not on the agenda, but within the subject jurisdiction thereof. You limit your comments to three minutes. Open public comments at six twelve.
Is there anyone on the Zoom?
Oh, there is no one online. There's no one online.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna close the public comments. At six thirteen. And move it on to reports and requests.
No reports from SAV.
Get the non-hearing items. Item two, citywide wireless communication facility communication update, another we had a. Well, you guys are doing some research on.
Yeah. We have a report. So, uh, I think we.
Thank you Chair and members of the planning commission and I Fernandez, management analyst for the community development department. And I'm gonna provide a brief update on the communication we have given for the citywide wireless communication facilities in the city of Coachella. Okay, so a little bit of background, on March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, we presented an update and status report for Coachella's wireless telecommunications facilities to the planning commission. We found that eight out of the eleven wireless facilities were out of compliance with their CUP conditions of approval due to the following reasons. General maintenance issues, unmaintained landscaping, the deterioration of the wireless telecommunications facilities, and their inability to mitigate their visual effects. We also contacted all of the A providers of the facilities that were found out of compliance with their CUP conditions of approval. And we did inform them of the ninety day period that they have in order to get back into compliance. And once again, here we have the map of the eleven facilities that are in the city. So I'm gonna go over the facilities that were out of compliance and give a brief update on the status of the communication with the providers. Um, so this one is the facility that is located on Oats Lane. Uh, we did inform the provider of non-compliance and we did have an onsite meeting with them on April fourth. Uh, they did state that they will address the concerns and they will submit a landscaping plan to the development services department. But we're still working on getting this one in compliance. Uh, site number four, this one is the one on Dillon Road. Um, also not in compliance, we did contact the provider on March twenty-second and they did state that they will address the concerns. The fifth site is the Monopalm that is located on Harrison Street behind the Old Riley's. Uh, we did contact Crown Council for this one on March twenty-seventh and they submitted a ticket to address the maintenance concerns for this facility. Our sixth site is on Harrison Street behind the Vuperless. Uh, we did contact the property manager for Coachella Gateway, for the Coachella Gateway Center on April fourth and the tenant didn't form, uh, the manager didn't form the tenant that the facility is in compliant. Uh, we did receive a response from the provider on April sixth and they will start working on getting the site in compliance. The next facility is a Monopalm on, in Bagduma Park. We contacted the applicant for the CUP on March twenty-second, they provided the proper contact for Verizon Wireless. Uh, the provider was informed of non-compliance for this facility. The next site is also at Bagduma Park, it is the Mono Eucalyptus. Uh, we did contact the applicant on March twenty-second, they provided the proper contact for AT&amp;T. Uh, we informed the provider of non-compliance, uh, but we didn't receive a response from this provider. Uh, we will follow up with them. So this one is a Monopalm on Jackson Street, uh, Jackson Square, sorry. Uh, so the same provider, uh, this facility has the same provider as the previous one for the Mono Eucalyptus. So again, we contacted the applicant, they provided the contact information for AT&amp;T, but they did not give us a response back. We will also follow up with the provider, it would be the same provider as the previous one. Uh, our next site is the Monopalm that's also on Jackson Square, we contacted the applicant on March twenty-second. Uh, they forwarded the information to Verizon Wireless and they stated they were, uh, work on getting the site back in compliance for this one. Okay, so us, we're still working on making sure that these sites are, uh, you know, get back in compliance. Uh, within the ninety day period that I know you all mentioned that you wanted to see the sites back in compliance. We did have two that didn't respond back, but we will follow up with them. The rest seemed, um, like they were willing to cooperate and do the necessities in order to get the sites back in compliance. I'm not sure if any of you have any questions, concerns.
I do. Did you get any pushback from the providers in terms of, you know, remedying the situation within ninety days? Were they opposed or were they in favor or willing to?
Uh, they seemed willing to work with us, I know there is a few concerns with the ones, when the, with the facility on Old Lane. They were kind of worried or questioned a lot of things that they had to work on, but for the majority, they seem to be willing to work on getting back in compliance. They haven't said anything specifically regarding the ninety day period, but we will follow up with them, make sure that they're on track with everything.
Fantastic, thank you so much for going out and reaching out to the providers and doing your due diligence, so thank you for that.
So you said there was two providers that didn't respond, is that correct?
Yes, um, it's actually one provider for two sites, so it's AT&amp;T and it's the same provider for both.
I noticed that there was a third AT&amp;T site that did respond.
Uh, yes, but that would be, I think it's a different contact person for that one. That they did respond for that one, yeah, it was a different applicant.
And that, could that person probably help assist in communicating with the other representative?
We can possibly, I can possibly mention something to them regarding the sites and see if they're able to provide a proper contact person or if they can assist with that.
Okay.
Over to someone, VAT and T is just different, right?
And different reps.
Yeah.
Now, is it, um, can we propose or enter into a landscape maintenance agreement with all, all eleven, once we get in compliance and agree to maintain their landscape?
Um, I think that would be hard to do, and then Carlos, if you have any feedback on this too, I think, um, because the conditional use permits already approved.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I'm not sure after the fact, you can add conditions if you've already made the original findings.
Yeah, they would have that, they would have to agree, voluntarily agree to that at this point. So it's gonna be like this, oh, you know, I'm, I'm compliant today, non-compliant a year later, right? So, you know, are we gonna, are we gonna be inspecting, are we gonna be sending code enforcement other, or landscape inspection? Oh, what, what's our plan there to mitigate?
So we, we wanna take this inventory and update to the planning commission every year, just to show that what's in compliance, right? Most cities don't do this. Um, and so, like the hardware is done where we've kind of compiled all the information, it's easy to kind of monitor this now. Um, so we plan to bring this back to my commission again next year, year after that, I think that's the only way we can make sure that they're in compliance.
Okay.
So two, two questions, so the first question is, um, have, have the city decider is based on the commission, what would happen after ninety days if, if one of these entities does not respond? Do, do we have anything that we, um, we need to decide, and obviously as you're sharing, there's, there's, and as Carlos is Mr. Campo saying that there's very little wiggle room, right, of what's possible and not, and I think the other, the other recommendation was that for future, um, for future of these towers, um, I think it's extremely important to, uh, write that down as part of the contracts moving forward so that there is a legal document that binds these responsibilities to keep these, uh, locations up to code, wherever that code is, based on that particular contract, just because, um, you know, uh, as I was sharing, one of the commissioners, uh, one of those is literally in my neighborhood and I see her, you know, go out with my boys and pick them up, who else, I see that. And it does, you know, need to be cleaned up, but again, um, I think in the future, obviously it is what it is as of now, we're gonna have to struggle with the ones that already exist, but I think moving forward, I think it's gonna be in the best interest of the city and us as residents, um, to put within those contracts, uh, that type of language to, uh, maintain our city beautiful.
Yeah, I believe, last time, I think the last time we spoke, right, we had discussed possibly updating the policy and the ordinance as far as what we want to see in future, um, you know, cell sites.
Yeah, creating the ordinance, um, you know, the planning commission has feedback. Uh, I think having good standard conditions for these wireless towers, right?
Um, fire hazard, all that stuff.
Yeah.
Fire hazard.
Just means to.
I think about the fire, that's right.
It's, uh, it's taking our responsibility, I think, uh, you can mention, Commissioner, that you gotta stipulate there, that there needs to be some fines if, if they're not keeping the maintenance or something.
Yeah.
I think we need to stipulate originally on the CUP to, to make sure that that's part of the condition of approval.
I, I think what, what would be good for us to do is, is work on those standard conditions and then we can bring them back to planning commission for you to review and then we'll start implementing that.
I think, um, can we, how soon can we get that done, like we need sixty days to do it.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, cuz, I mean, most of the conditions, we are, we applied most of those conditions already, but there's probably a couple new ones.
Yeah.
That we want to incorporate, so we'll bring that back, um, to the planning commission, maybe in the study session.
Along, along those lines, are there any towers in, I guess, in, in, in vision? For the future, have any of them been, you know, asked or, or do we have anything that we foresee that there's gonna be one, obviously here down the street or whatever, that could be like the guinea pig of just trying this out and see.
An applicant?
Yeah, an applicant.
Or somebody, it's there somewhere.
They'll, they'll, they'll be born, you know, and especially as the other side of Coachella, you know, other side of eighty-six, grows, there'll be more coming back.
Yeah.
I think going back to that, you know, study session and contributing to those standards would be wonderful, so I think, you know, we can look forward to ensure that that's.
I think we just need to build that in into the legal language, so these guys know what their responsibility is, and if they don't, and we just say, you know what, there's gonna be a fine if these things aren't maintained properly, I don't think it's, should be the city's responsibility to go back and have, push these guys to clean the place up, you know, they.
cleaning the place up, you know, they, it should be stipulated in the legal language originally what their responsibility should be.
Right. So example, what some other cities do is they, they require by condition of approval that the, the latest contact is actually advertised there. And, you know, because sometimes they put a contact and they're no longer that, that contact, right? Really difficult sometimes to contact, you know, get to the person you're supposed to contact, right? These are very big companies. So, you know, that's an example, one of the things we can do. Now, alternate commissioner, I know you mentioned, you know, is there like penalties or what's the recourse? The planning commission could consider revoke a conditional use permit based on non-compliance with the conditions of approval, right? And so as staff, what we want to make sure is that we give them some time to show that they can satisfy the conditions of approval. It does help when the planning commission does identify that this is important, right? And it's coming from the planning commission and a timeframe, right? So when, when an A E mentions, hey, the planning commission likes to see this, would like to see this brought into compliance ninety days. Well, they become a little bit more concerned because there's the, you are the body that could potentially revoke the conditional use permit.
Yeah, another comment, um, you know, we, we did try to make, you know, communication, try to contact them by phone. Can we now send them a certified letter? Seeing that it's almost gonna be impossible to get these guys to be on the phone, right? So it's probably best that we send a certified letter to them and then really stipulate what we plan on doing, right? Like, okay, the planning commission desires ninety days correction. If they're not, if they don't, you know, if they don't oblige to the correction, then we gotta, you know, seek recourse. And really drive it home.
That's just good for you.
Yeah.
And to be clear, are these for the two, three that didn't respond, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I mean, when you're approving these permits, I mean, it's, it's kind of an agreement to follow through with these conditions.
So we left, I imagine we left the voicemail, right?
Yes.
And he hasn't responded?
Voicemail and email.
Right, the person hasn't gone back to you, right? How many days have started?
It's kind of like one, four months, right? Since the last, your presentation.
Well, doesn't seem like he's gonna be responding anytime soon.
Yeah.
So it's probably time now to act. You know, just send a letter.
I think a letter stating that if not responded, we could possibly revoke the CUP, you know, right? I think that'll grab these dentions.
Yeah.
And then fines on top of that. We, we gotta figure out what the reasonable fine would be.
I believe, I believe Henry did mention last time, we, we talked about that, that there was within the ordinance room for, like, financial recourse within the law.
Yeah, I think so. Carl, could we, I mean, I guess they're violating conditions of approval. I guess like it technically be,
we'd have, if, if our ordinance allows for that, I mean, if it's a code issue, we don't decide on the code, right? Right, we're gonna straight up find, so there's something specific in the code that's providing these conditions, we can finally maybe would reduce though on that. I think the big stick here is the revocation of CUP. I mean, that's a big stick you have here. And once you're going down that route, they need, they need a rest of the issue, otherwise.
I think it's all reasonable, you know, just reasonable realm. Just need to keep the place clean, you know, maintenance. A lot of people just wanna walk away and say, we don't have any responsibility to already, there's, and everything.
Now, I'm gonna add a twist to this. In the event, let's say they get their CUP revoked, what is the impact there? Because, I mean, we need these monopawns and these cells. I mean, it's all, right?
Well, I, I have a reason here, so.
So anyone with expertise or anyone that can, you know, share a little bit more, what are the repercussions?
Let's open it and get to that point.
Understood, but you know, we also have to evaluate that other side of things. If we're talking about revoking, then we gotta be also ready to step up and understand what are the repercussions.
Yeah, but also, also too, it's important that, you know, we, we, people doing business in Coachella, we mean, you know, good business partners, right? You know, obviously, they're operating in our city. They do business in our city. They collect revenues from our city, you know, and from our residents. And, and at this point, you know, he's not being, the representative is not acting in good faith, seeing that, you know, it's been X, over X amount of days and he hasn't responded to you, right? And so, hey, you know, you got, you gotta, we gotta move to call to his attention.
Yeah, I've, I've never seen a situation where a CUP has been revoked. Usually the applicant will comply. The other key that we do have, we get a lot of applications through, like administrative, like building permit to change out antennas. So one of the sites that we mentioned on Oats Lane, they're proposing to do antenna swaps. And we said, well, we're not gonna prove this. Your tower is out of compliance. Bring it into compliance and then we can consider approving it, right? So, so that, that's really what got them to act. And so those change outs happen all the time. So that's our extra key that we have to be able to do this.
So with, when, when they go to do their maintenance and they're, you know, trying to work out the provision, what is something that we can enact during that time? Right? So if they gotta pull a permit, you know, to, is it, is it a, is there being a permit for that?
Um, yeah, so they'll get a building permit or, or antennas, antenna swap outs, right? And it's all administrative, right? So it doesn't come back to planning commission under like state and federal law. So, but, you know, they, they do have to be in compliance with their CUP. And, you know, I think sometimes in the past that, you know, maybe that part was overlooked, right, in terms of compliance? So, you know, kind of concerns about the planning commission allow staff to, to really bring that up as an issue, right? Before we issue new permits.
Also, the next question along the lines of, of knowing the repercussions. I'm ignorant in this question, but I just wanna know if there's, is there a possibility of, of some of these trees, obviously, to be obsolete at a certain point, that the technology is too old, that is just, at some point, do we know that they're all usable? I guess, is a question that someone is, is, is using them with the technology?
Yeah, they're all being used. I mean, I don't know when, if they would be obsolete. I mean, some of the changes that we've been seeing in the last few years, maybe not as much in Coachella, is the small cell sites.
Okay.
So they're smaller facilities that you might see more in other cities where they're kind of on top of, like a light pole. So you're seeing more of those.
They're like the five G ones.
Yeah, we just got some of the university, so.
Hey, question, in regards to that building permit, is there a clause there for site cleanup?
No. No, there isn't. Um, but we don't, I mean, we don't need it, right? So it's us going back to the CUP on that tower, understanding what the conditions are. Cause there's, there's usually conditions on there about what the landscaping is supposed to be that's maintained. So it's just applying that condition. But we don't, yeah, with that pulling permit.
Okay.
I agree, no, sorry, I agree with Commissioner. Her net is for, you know, the staff could definitely send those certified letters, but those have not been responsive.
Yeah, I think that's a good approach. Send them a certified letters, you, you respond and, you know, just give them what the criteria is, is what we expect from them.
And we'll do that, work on the standard conditions, bring that back, probably, um, into May, early June.
Perfect.
Okay, good. Let's go to the next item, public hearing, the calendar, and quays a judicial. Number three, AM, PM, five twenty-one alcohol sales conditional use permit number three sixty-four to allow liquor sales. ABC license type twenty-one off sale general at the AMPM convenience store in the existing commercial building located at forty-eight zero five five Grapefruit Boulevard. G C and Suns Corporation, the applicants.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Avalara and I'm here to present conditional use permit three sixty-four. And this is again to allow the liquor sales as part of a proposed AMPM convenience store. And this is located right at the corner of Avenue forty-eight and Grapefruit. So. Alright, so you see here the vicinity, again, located at the corner of Grapefruit and Avenue forty-eight. The general designation is suburban retail district and the zoning is general commercial. So this is an aerial view of where the convenience store is located. This is a one, one point seventy-five acre lot. And when you see up to the north, you see the Tower Market, that's already in the Riverside Incorporated Zone. And within the AMPM shopping center, this is called the Gateway Shopping Center and we have a Burger King, a Car Wash, and we also have the AMPM. So the background for this is that it currently holds a type twenty off sale for beer and wine license that was issued in twenty seventeen. Last year in March, the applicant applied for a type twenty-one on sale general alcohol license, but it withdrew the application in June of the same year due to concerns over the conditions set by the city. And the conditions were landscape maintenance, the abandoned pylon sign removal, and the sidewalk improvement. So the applicant has resubmitted a request to allow the type twenty-one alcohol license for off sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits. The applicant will surrender their type twenty alcohol license for the off sale of beer and wine upon the approval of type twenty-one alcohol license. So the analysis for, in section seventeen point seventy-four of the municipal code, it establishes that off sale establishments must comply with the following requirements. And that is the, that the establishment does not fall within seven hundred feet of a religious worship center, schools, parks, playgrounds, residential areas. And we did establish that it does not fall within that seven hundred radius. So Rantulas Flotes does sit outside of the seven hundred feet and any other residential tract of school. The following would be that the establishment does not fall within seven hundred feet of any other liquor store. In this case, you do have the Tower Market across the street. However, it's not within the city of Coachella. So we wouldn't count that. The, the third one would be that the request establishment of the proposed location would not adversely affect the economic welfare of the nearby community. And the establishment would not adversely affect the welfare of the community. Since the establishment sits along commercial center which provides essential services like residential for the residents, like food and fuel. Okay, and the fourth would be that it is no greater than the, than five percent of the sales floor or a thousand square feet, whichever is less. And in this case, if you see the yellow area, that's where the storage and the display will be. And that is roughly four point five percent. So it's still sits below that five percent limit. Okay, so upon the review, we can determine that the AMPM, you know, is, we can actually issue the type twenty-one alcohol license. However, we as the staff do have a few conditions that we would like to include. And that would be the landscape. So this is a landscape fund that was approved in two thousand seventeen with the entitlement of the Burger King and the Car Wash. So this is a color version and this following version is the one that has legend. And as you can see at the moment, so the staff, we had a little walkthrough April of twenty twenty-three to observe the landscape in the commercial area. We did observe that there's certain sections of the landscape were replanted to meet the approved landscape plan. However, we also noticed that there was missing gold in the California Gold Crush gravel throughout their center. We also had missing trees, missing shrubs, overgrown trees. So you can see the overgrown trees over here. Uh, we also had the tenant panel that's falling apart. And overall, you know, they're actually not complying with the landscape plan that was issued and approved in two thousand seventeen. So it's something that we would like to address and add in the conditions to, so they could bring into compliance. Um, the other condition that we do have would be the sidewalk extension. And so the staff would recommend the sidewalk extension of the frontage of the property to the frontage of the property limits. This was originally entitled as an off-site improvement in two thousand seventeen, but it was never completed. So it's something that we would like to add, so they could actually move forward and complete it. Um, so the staff met with the applicant the twelfth of this month to discuss the staff concerning the landscape, the pylon sign that we would like to remove and also the sidewalk. And the applicant expressed interest in improving all landscape areas and agreed with the terms. And all these conditions are addressed in our item, which is in the resolution, number three, four, five, and twelve. In regards to the parking, the site is fully developed with three points of ax, with three points of axes. The side provides ample parking spaces for the existing commercial center. And it also has appropriate lighting that for the entire parking area. So we don't have any issues with the parking. And we, in regards to the hours of operation, the actual store is open twenty-four hours or seven days a week. The alcohol sales, however, will halt at two AM to six AM. So the staff recommends that the planning commission approve conditional use permit number three sixty-four with the findings and conditions listed in resolution number twenty twenty-three oh eight. If you have any questions, I will be able to answer. Thank you.
So the, the sidewalk extension, how far south does that go?
So.
Through the bridge and across?
Oh, no, no, no. So it's just based on their lot. So whatever they have in us, their lot, which I should have added a picture. It doesn't go beyond, it's just based on where their frontage limit is.
Okay, so what is about?
Looks like about a hundred feet.
A hundred feet, okay.
So the other property next to it isn't the same owner, definitely?
I'm sorry?
Same owner.
It is, it's the sidewalk going towards the, the bridge, right?
Exactly, exactly, yeah, so.
Coming into question.
Yeah, let me see. Yeah, there's a picture.
So there, there's a, there's a pad that hasn't been developed there yet. So it's a restaurant pad.
That's part of the same property, yeah?
Right, so, so you'll see it on the landscape plan. So there was, it was intended to be a five thousand square foot restaurant, but that hasn't developed yet.
So we never stipulated that that needed to be the sidewalk extended all into the, the entire property?
I'm not sure exactly what happened during the construction phase of the project. But, you know, obviously, it wasn't developed, but it wasn't, it was a condition of approval.
Was or wasn't?
It was.
So we should have had him put the sidewalk in all the way across the entire property?
Yeah, so we, yeah, we think that's a fair ask because that was the original condition for the, for the commercial center.
But that isn't part of the condition on, on, on what we're proposing?
No, it's, it's not part of the condition. It's only that a hundred feet.
Okay, so it's up to us, whatever.
Does the, has the applicant, obviously, he's ready to go, right? Does he have a construction schedule, when he's gonna put this concrete in, laid on sidewalk in?
No, we don't know. Do you, do you have that condition up? We can see how it reads for the sidewalk.
For the sidewalk? I don't have.
Ready to read it out if you have that realization.
Is there concrete on the, on the end of his property? On the, this is the property next door to him, on the south side of the property?
No. No, so it, like, basically it'll stop and it'll be discontinued underneath the bridge.
No, but I'm saying on the other side, was that part of the, you said that was a part of the CUP too also? Additional approval to when they were gonna build the, the pad for the restaurant?
Yeah, so what, what you see on the figure, you can kind of see where the sidewalk ends. And then, and then you can see that the sidewalk stops, doesn't continue. So kind of where those posts are, where the end of that post is, further south is where the sidewalk would end.
Okay, so the pad, the restaurant pad is actually where the poles are at, on that, that, that side, or is it on the, on the south side of the bridge?
No, no, it's on that side, yeah, north side of the bridge.
Okay. I thought it was on the other side, okay.
Okay.
And there's current concrete there underneath the bridge?
There isn't.
But does the city have like a pedestrian mobility plan that they're? And uh.
Yeah, we.
Incorporate in that area there and. You know, handle that, what is it, fifty feet or so of concrete?
Yeah, it's a priority for the city. I know the city, you know, was looking for funding through grants. Uh, to be able to fund those improvements there. Cause that would be more of the city's obligation of the bridge.
Right.
So, but having that connection allows us to kind of continue that, make sure it's continuous.
Just a couple of things, sir. Well, one is lighting, right? Obviously. Lighting's an issue there for pedestrians and, you know, at night. So it's something we wanna consider moving forward.
I have a question. So their license is approved. Is there a timeframe where they have to complete the conditions?
That's a that's a two star, right?
Yeah, that's I'm looking for that condition.
Sidewalk is number six, yes. It says the applicant shall install and then continue the sidewalk along the southwest portion of the commercial center, specifically. The frontage along Great Food Boulevard of the vacant parcel. Um, six oh three two twenty zero fifty-seven within six months of the approval of sixty U three sixty-four.
So nothing to do with lighting?
Uh, we don't have lighting, no.
Because lighting wasn't part of the original plan? Yeah, cause I I think for me, I go back to what was originally approved. And how this is nothing like that corner. Talking about the obvious, right? So then now. The business owner wants to have a different license. But yet what was approved hadn't been up to par. Right, and so um, my feeling, I guess my question is, is there an alcohol license? As a right, so I get my point, will will he loses, will the will the business owner lose their license? Or do they have a license and they're just trying to?
Currently, they do have a license, which is a type twenty, and that's for beer and wine.
Right.
So they wanna change that to the type twenty-one, which is beer, wine, and distilled spirits. So they just, they're just trying to change that. Um, but they currently do a whole A license.
My my feeling as a as a community member is that there needs to be. You know, some, i- i- it needs to be up to par to what. Right, and again, what whatever the commission decides, what is up to par, right? Um, in order to move there. Now, when it comes to the sidewalk, I get it. I mean, I think it's important to add the lighting. I think it's important. To be mindful of, you know, pedestrians and uh, we have more and more people, especially now with the the festival. And I don't know if you guys heard the news about the crazy uh, traffic of people getting dropped off and this and that, so. It's it's gonna happen, right? Cause it's human nature to do those things. So I think uh, we need to be mindful of those items uh, moving forward. Uh, as a city.
All right, um, is there anything else that you would like to add?
Yeah, just what my my concern is obviously as as um, that sidewalk gets built there. Lighting is there's there's obviously no street light there. You know, but and you can see the photo there. I know they're supposed to, you're supposed to cut in a driveway, right, eventually? But. There's, I I would like to see like a lighting element or a lighting plan just because there's so many transients in that area. Um, and I think it'd be, you know, we'd have to just err and sign with the this. Public at that point, right? And really try to, you know, for the sake of safety at least. You know, really look at maybe lighting. I I uh. I've driven there multiple times at night, so yeah, it's a little dark, you know, when you pass, the only light you get is the signal light, but. Maybe you can consider something that had work. See what that's out or maybe.
I want partial lighting on the frontage part of the property. I think that's important, at least for the sidewalks and areas, and I think that's important. The other stuff obviously is not developed, so I don't think that we should really. Push the issue about having to put light across the the entire block, but I think on the frontage part where the sidewalk and. Public safety issues, I think that's important that we stipulate as as a conditional approval to to. You know, prove this project with stipulations that they they think the sidewalk and also the lighting and these other furniture part of.
Uh, Commissioner Gonzalez, can I ask a question? So that picture is from when? Because.
I I took that picture yesterday.
Yesterday? Where's the billboard? Cause there was a billboard around there, if I recall. Okay, cause I was like, wait a minute, it was a billboard, so thank you.
Probably like right, yeah.
Okay.
Right out of the picture, yeah.
It's still in the general.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you. I just wanted to come over that, cause I was like, I just passed by, I was like, where's?
Yeah.
A little bit of light, but not enough. Exactly. So I agree with you guys. That's all I'm like.
That billboard is eventually gone, right? When they, when they develop that commercial center, that restaurant pad?
They're they're able, so there are some billboards that exist in the city that are not along the freeway. And those are um, old approvals. They're not conforming, right?
There it is.
So if if they abandon the sign and they stop using it for a billboard. Or I think it's either a period of ninety or a hundred eighty days on our code, then we could uh, work on uh, the removal. But they they've been using it, right? So as long as they continue to use it, they actually get to keep it. Um, if, so there's there's some of the lighting there. Um, if if you are interested in adding a conditional lighting. You know, if you could be specific, if you're being like the street lighting, or if it's more onsite lighting, uh, that would be helpful.
Approach there, I think it take carry them on to to where the bridge is at.
Okay.
At least to like where the the general area we walk.
A standard street light, right? Cause you're gonna want some some continuity eventually as we, as the corridor gets developed. You want at least street lights there.
Well, look at if you uh.
Is there, is there streetlights? There there's no streetlight.
No, there's no streetlight, but if you look at the the lights that existing, if you maybe put another set of two lights right on against the sidewalk. I think I think that would really help a lot.
Well, I really wanna do it, you know, however the city engineer, if it fits with the street lighting plan the city has in that particular area, I don't know if there is one. Right, or?
Yeah, if if the planning commission wanted to add that condition, maybe have it flexible, that way we get the feedback from the city engineer. There are requirements of distance from the nearest ones. The nearest one is at the intersection.
Right.
And I'm not sure if it's too close, uh, but a lot, if if you also state that either it could be. Uh, onsite lighting similar to existing lighting, then it gives us that flexibility to just make sure it works. I don't know what the city engineer would say.
I I think the the parking that might be would be sufficient, to to light up that area. You get into the street light, it's you know, it's gonna be, like you said, you have a certain distance, but you look at that picture there. All he has to do, they had another one light or two more lights on where the pad was gonna be on the frontage part of where the sidewalks are. So I think that would be appropriate. That would be plenty of light. So he would probably have to have maybe one of the most two lights.
And then obviously, we're assuming that those two lights do work. I haven't driven in there at night, so.
I think the safest bet is to probably cut the street light and cut the street light in and then. Have that have some continuity as we develop further south, right? Wouldn't have street lights, I imagine. Right, because there's gonna be a walking path, so you can promote pedestrian, you know, mobility. So if we're promoting sidewalks, we we need.
I think we check with the city engineer. Get his assessment, we we make some on. But I personally, I'm looking at at the picture here, I think the parking that lights would be, you know. Adequate lighting, but if uh, the engineer says that we need a street light and.
At that point, it's the street light, the city maintains the street light, right? Yeah. So it's probably best if we're pushing, if if we're the one pushing sidewalks, we're pushing mobility and probably streetlight.
Yeah, I compare with both commissioners. Actually, I think they're both approaches to first evaluate what is the best possible, but to your point, Commissioner Hernandez. If we're promoting mobility, sidewalks, growth, then we need to ensure we have visibility for when it comes when it starts. So thank you for that.
I'm gonna propose to move the project forward and then stipulations of the lighting concern.
My second motion.
We sidewalk up to the bridge.
Um, I just wanna make one clarification, cause I know Commissioner Hernandez asked a question earlier uh, before the meeting about. The decomposed granite and actually probably misspoke when I, when, you know, he was asking about three quarter inch diameter. Um, rock and at least along the front edge of of AMPM, doesn't look like it's three quarter inch. So I didn't realize it was actually on the landscape plan.
Is that DG or is that?
Like a quarter inch, uh, it looks like along the frontage. But, yeah, I I misspoke and, you know, I know you have raised the question, but. Yeah, that doesn't look like it's what was for plan, but.
Yeah, so let's, right, obviously, it's, you know, he's he's the one, the the property owners is responsible for, you know, maintaining his landscape and. You know, if he gets a washout or a dust storm, you know, it's not, then it just. At that point, right, he's gonna be reinvesting in decomposed gravel as opposed to, you know, just throwing in three quarter gravel and making, having some continuity. Uh, around his development, right, and just, like, you know, it it's gonna hold the course.
That changes the aesthetic appearance of the landscape when you ask.
So if there's someone that doesn't know about gravel, can you bring me up to speed with that, please?
Yeah, so it's almost like. Decomposed gravels, you know, it's crushed, right? And so they kind of turn into like a dirt substance, but it's colorful. And the problem with that is, you know, once a rain comes, it washes out or.
So we want a little bit hardier, more stronger.
And and then it's the as we, you know, move on. Um, in the future, right, we enter into these landscapes agree agreements, you know, the, if a if a commercial owner or anybody developer. You know, wants to, you know, install the decomposed granite, well, he's gonna have to. You hold up his end of the land landscape agreement, right? So he's constantly gonna have to bring it up to, if bring it up to par.
Okay, you got standards for this after soon?
Um, no, it's not not for the size, um, but you know, the planning commission can weigh in. And I'll give you an example of this, the Fontana Plaza with the Starbucks. So the new gravel that went in on the new part of the center, that's three quarter inch gravel. Now, the older part, which, you know, it kind of looks more dated and washed out, that's the quarter, more inch. That's kind of the difference.
Understood, thank you.
What they do is they put a liner on it and they put a granite on the deep, so it will contaminate with dirt and stuff in the name, so. You know, you know, usually have a. I don't know, like, like your expectancy of three years, depending on the rain and the elements.
Sounds like a cost savings method, and when it rains, it doesn't wash out.
Yeah, and so at that point, it's just within the behooves the the owner to, you know, to put three quarters gravel and versus. Having to come back year after year and, you know, yeah, put that in.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, so that's something maybe he wants to consider, I don't, I'm not sure, so.
Yeah, well, I'll talk about it.
So should we?
You have a, so wait, there's a motion, right?
He motioned with the with. With the lighting condition, yeah. Yeah, I'll say I'll second the motion.
Uh, Andrew is online. He'd like to speak.
Oh, the engineer.
Are you, you're able to talk? Okay, sorry, I was trying not to interrupt, but I uh, was listening to a whole conversation about the streetlights. Um, I did check the frontage, um, while you guys were having that discussion, it is four hundred feet frontage from Dylan to the bridge. Um, so if we are installing the additional sidewalk, I definitely concur that it would be. Um, wise to put a light there as well. Typically, your spacing on streetlights is two hundred to three hundred feet. Um, so it would be appropriate to have that additional street light, um, if we are filling in that gap in the sidewalk.
So would it make sense, Andrew, to to put the streetlight and also an additional parking lot light to? To make sure that we light up that whole area adequately?
Um. Any additional parking lots? I mean, I wouldn't comment on uh, parking lots, um, because that would be onsite lighting. Um, so that would have to do with the actual uh, lighting and photometrics onsite. Um, they do have that additional pad that they are still supposed to develop. So this this expansion of sidewalk and the additional streetlight. Um, were originally. Supposed to be done when they did the next pad, but the uh, the the subsequent pad has never been developed. But when that next pad gets developed, if you look at the um, site plan that Gabriel had shared at the beginning. That has a lot of extra parking, so there will be a significant amount of extra parking lot lighting that would be added. If that additional pad was developed in the future.
Okay, so the street light, how what you your proposal, where would you put the the street light, uh, distance from the? From the bridge north? And is that enough, is that enough coverage where we have a? An empty sidewalk, which is about a hundred feet is what we're kind of estimating?
I would, I I wouldn't want to say like a specific distance at this time, because that would depend on the location of their future driveway. It would most likely go um, like, just to the south of the of their proposed second driveway cut. Cause I know they have one additional driveway cut that's proposed for the next pad. Um, so the location of that street line needs to be coordinated with other uh, potential improvements. Um, and as far as overall lighting for the plan, we are applying for grant right now to put. Lighting under the bridge, so we are, we do have plans to extend the sidewalk under the bridge. Actually install lighting under the bridge, um, and also with the Arts and Music Line Grant Project. Will be redoing all of the lights across the top of the bridge too, um, and those will also shine light down um, to the lower level. Um, so we do have a lot of uh, plans, uh, both grant funded. Um, and potentially grant funded to install more lighting and more sidewalk. Um, at the bridge and going south. Um, but this project in order to get the infill sidewalk, I feel like one additional street light. Adjacent to that strike, adjacent to that new sidewalk would be important.
Okay, so what's the coverage on that that one street lamp? Distance?
What's the coverage?
Yeah, what's the coverage? Is it fifty feet, twenty-five feet, a hundred feet?
Um, well, those are the the higher street lights, cause they'd be the highway rated street lights. Uh, but again, the 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 standard spacing for those lights is between two hundred to three hundred feet. So they have, if the the existing intersection. Um, you know, so is. That light is a little bit less than four hundred feet from the bridge. So one additional light kind of in that two fifty, two hundred and fifty foot range would give you good coverage.
Okay, so what's the timeframe in terms of uh, when we're gonna actually get, we we said we apply for the brand and. Do we have a timeframe on when we actually gonna install the the street lamp or can hear two years?
The the Arts and Music Line is already funded, so that grant has been, um, that grant is already. Uh, funded, they're currently finished, they're currently working on the uh, final design. For that project, that project's actually run by Sebag. Um. And the other project we are applying for the grant next week.
Okay, so no, no definite timeframe on when when we should have that lamp installed?
The additional lighting under the bridge? No, we don't have it. We do not have it. We don't have a timeframe for the under bridge lighting at this time.
Just just that one on the street, the one we're 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 talking about.
Oh, no, I'm suggesting that the applicant would install that with their sidewalk. I'm not, I'm not saying that the city is planning on placing the addition, I'm saying that. I am, I concur with the sentiments of the planning commission, that an additional street light conditioned on the applicant. Is appropriate. If you are, if you are conditioning them to build the sidewalk, infill sidewalk. Then I concur that they should also be conditioned to install an additional street light, so that that new sidewalk has adequate lighting.
Okay, perfect. So I think that if we put that street lamp in and uh, we have that distance, I think that should be plenty that one 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 street lamp.
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to add on to what the city engineer mentioned is that, in terms of, I think it came up timeframe. Cause the sidewalk, we mentioned six months, um, I would just suggest maybe having the same similar timeframe.
Oh, yeah, for sure. That that's work concurrently. Uh, question, Mr. City Engineer for you? Um, how do we plan on energizing the uh, the lighting underneath the bridge? Is that? So what, so all I'm asking is, is if we need to, um. If we need to take, you know, power down, you know. Down, uh, Cesar Chavez, you know, south, you know, is is, can we just daisy chain and piggyback off that street light, or do you want, need to? Run a transformer from wherever, wherever. There's power there on facilities, right, so the only thing I'm trying to avoid here is. Right, it's cutting up his, his landscape, right, to be able to do your lighting system underneath your bridge. So maybe if, if we could all, you know, get together and. Work in sync in unison and kind of coordinate. Um, you, what, ultimately what the city wants to do. Um, as far as lighting solutions underneath the bridge and what we're asking him to do within six months here of approval. Um, you know, I would hate to see, you know, the applicant, you know, do everything he needs to do, only. For the city to come back and rip it all up, right, to install, install. A four inch conduit to install a transformer there. You know, so.
It, our, our plans would not affect his improvements. Um, the bridge already has uh, streetlights, so it already has, it already has power and, and conduits. Um. So being able to, um. Backbone off those existing lights, replacing the existing lights on the bridge and then tying those into um, sub-bridge lighting. Um, that power is already available on the bridge deck and at, at the upper level.
And on the lower level?
Yeah, there's.
There's also a power line south of the bridge that, um. If we were to tie in the entire sidewalk from Mitchell Drive back up to the bridge, there's existing overhead power lines. In that direction where uh, you would be able to draw the power for any. Any lighting improvements that we did with our potential grant project.
Okay.
So that grant, is that uh, all the way to Mitchell, Mitchell Street also included, or? It's going all the way from Mitchell all the way to the bridge?
Yeah, but again, that's just a perspective grant, but yes.
Perfect, good, good, yeah.
Yes, it, it fills in all the way to Mitchell, it, it involves lighting along the slopes, landscaping, uh. It's a, it's a, it's a fairly detailed. In order to have an, to make that bridge a nice entryway into the city.
Good job, Andrew, okay, thank you.
If you'd like more information on that grant, I would recommend reaching out to Selena Jimenez, our grant manager, and she would be able to provide you information on. On the grant and what's involved within it.
Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Here, I was gonna mention, I, I don't believe the public hearing was opened or closed uh, before the motion was made, so you may wanna allow that. Opportunity before you make a decision on the project.
Yeah, we opened it.
We did?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't.
No, that was the.
So, how do we do this?
So you, you would just, um.
Public comment, now we're doing it.
No, no, you just say you're, you're opening the public hearing and then just take the time.
Okay, so we'll open it to public hearing.
And.
At uh.
And then we'll look to see if anyone has any comment. Online.
Seven, at seven, seven?
There is nobody online?
And if, I don't know if they meant for the public has comment, okay.
We have to come. We'll close the public hearing at seven eight.
Do you wanna repeat the motion that you had earlier, um?
You wanna present? No, I wanna just come into them. So the motion was to uh.
Yeah.
And um, which was.
Yeah, with.
I was moving to uh. To approve uh. The, the project with the stipulation of uh, adding the sidewalk and the lighting as part of a conditional.
And for the lighting, six months is okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I second the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Fonseca?
Yes.
Commissioner Murillo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
And Chair Gonzalez?
Yes.
If motion passes.
Uh, informational number four, tentative of future agenda planning commission.
Yeah, Commissioners, this is just, uh, we try to provide this in your agendas now, just give you an idea of what's coming up in the future. May not happen, but it gives you a good idea uh, what may be coming up for some of the future meetings, I think it goes all the way to July. Uh, so May is gonna be a pretty busy month. For the planning commission. May seventeenth especially. But good, good projects coming up, so I don't know if you, you have any questions on them, some of them are long-range uh, development projects. So May seventeenth, we have a zoning consistency update. So our general plan, um. In, in two thousand fifteen included a general plan map. The zoning map that we have is not consistent with that general plan map. And so it creates a lot of uncertainty. For property owners, they're trying to figure out what they can do with their property, right? And we always have to tell them, like, you're gonna have to do a change of zone, right, so that's a cost to the property owner. So this brings everything to compliance, uh, it actually adds about. I think five or six new zones actually adds the downtown. A new downtown zone to allow for mixed use, we actually don't allow for mixed use in the downtown currently. So that's gonna come back to you on May seventeenth, we're gonna have a. Public review process of that document starting on May first. So I'll email the planning commission, let you know that's available for the public.
Awesome, cool.
Um, just other comments I just wanted to add, uh, you know, we just came back from the Plan Commissioners Academy, so thank you for uh, Commissioner. Uh, Ramirez and, and also for uh, Vice Chair Hernandez for attending. But uh, you know, I don't know if there's any kind of insights you wanted to share with the team and. Obviously, I think it's a good conference and maybe others may wanna attend next year.
Sure, uh, definitely, right, one, one of the, one of the main takeaways was. Um, you have to speed with all the legislation that's been passed in Sacramento, right, obviously, you know, last meeting we were here, we. Uh, recommended we have, we host a housing summit to further, you know. Be, get into it, get into the nuts and bolts of it, right, and work with the. We can have a joint session perhaps with the city council and regular fi- try to figure out housing. Um. That and also too, we, you know, we were made aware of the uh, planning commission handbook that was, you know, was. They, they uh, let us know, right, they notified us of that handbook, also too, there's a lot of material on their website. So if you're interested, um. And getting to, get up to speed on some of the stuff that was, um. Made available, just you can visit their website, um, since you can go to Leo Cities, it's all there. And all the presentations are there, I don't know if they were recorded, though. I, I don't think so, but I know the, a lot of the PowerPoint presentations are there. So you can look over them, also too, um. One, couple of things, one is uh, we should schedule, um. The cell tower ordinance when we should probably put that, put that on the planning commission future agenda. And how we do, where I share a point.
Uh, we're looking at some options right now, basically. So, um, I think SharePoint may not be the, what we would use. Um, just in a conversation with AT, but there are looking some other options that could. Provide the same kind of sharing capacity, um. But it's a, it's a problem right now for the city, because there are large files that. We wanna be able to share with the public, but we don't have anything like, um, with the other program, Docu.
Docu, wow.
Like a Dropbox?
Yeah, there we go, Drop, Drop, Dropbox.
For large documents.
Yeah, there's other software that we could possibly use, like ProjectWise, or, you know, industry software, right, we check in, check out files. That's just something, you know, project management or document management solutions.
But I think, I think it's in, in the works, yeah.
Oh, cool.
Now, I'd like to add as well that, um, for those who have not attended a planning commission or have never been in this capacity like myself, it's my first time in. The city of Coachella being a planning commissioner, I found uh, the academy to be very, very, um, insightful. Also, I got to meet with other new planning commissioners and seizing planning commissioners from different cities. And cities, you know, similar size to Coachella, so I found lots of value in that. Also, um, I directed you to go to calcities.org, which is. The uh, League of California Cities website, where you can retrieve the PowerPoint presentations that we. Got, you know, presented at the academy, and so with that said, I learned about SICA. And everything that comes with it, of course, to include about our general plan, the different plans that we have here in the city. Um, what else? Gosh, there was just so much information, I encourage you to take. Some time to peruse those slides, they're gonna glean much information from that and. Um, one thing that I started doing is meeting with uh, Gabriel and city staff. On a monthly basis, just, just to check in on questions that I have, things that I'm learning. As I'm, you know, surveying myself, our website, our plans, as a new planning commissioner, I took that upon myself, so I encourage you as well. Um, the other thing is ask questions, uh, that's something that said if you're new, always ask questions, there's no silly question, and thank you to. Um, our chair here who encourages us to speak up and ask those questions as well. And uh, it was great, so thank you for the opportunity, I really, really embraced it and enjoyed it, so thank you. I'm glad to be here as well.
Any other questions? Okay, so. It's seven fifteen, adjournment?